Right? Yep, four people. Has anyone heard from Ian?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, yes, anybody?
December 7th, 2020.
And as a reminder to announce that we're having the remote meeting because in response to the emergency orders and everyone needs to identify where they are located, city and county, as part of the roll call.
Okay, did you just do that? Or do I have to repeat it again?
I guess that was good enough.
Thank you. So I'll kind of order the study session for the city of Lathir Village for today, December the 7th. First up. Munich.
Well, each, each council member needs to identify that they're attending remotely and where they're attending from.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Hi, I'm Donnie Stallings. I'm attending remotely in Lathir Village.
Bruce Cantor, we're attending, attending remotely also in Lathir Village, Oakland County.
Salim Siddiqui attending remotely, Lathir Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
And Kelly Garrett attending for Lathir Village, Michigan, in Oakland County. So back to Munich Code, I have so many questions.
You're, you're on the wrong agenda, Kelly. We have an amended agenda. I, I don't, item A is, is the tree replacement program Roger Lynn, one of the residents.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. Sorry, Roger. Sorry, 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 sorry.
Hey, hi there, everybody. I want to, you know, thank you all for allowing me to participate in today's study session. I know a good portion of you, been a resident for 30 years. And one of the things that I love about Lathir Vill- Village is, of course, the people, the neighborhoods, and with the neighborhoods, you know, the, the trees. Being a dog walker, I walk around a lot of the, the neighborhoods, see a lot of things going on in our, in our beautiful community. But one of the things that has hit me recently is that there's a number of trees being removed, whether it's on the city right of way, or whether it's on individuals' own property. And I realize trees mature, mature like anything else matures, and at times begin infested with bogs, have to replace them, et cetera, et cetera, or have them cut down. And I guess the point that I want to try to bring on to this, the team tonight is you know, we used to have, the city used to have a tree replacement program where twice a year, you know, in the spring and in the fall, the city would promote, hey, we have trees available at cost. And residents could buy them. And if it was to be placed, if the tree was to be put on the right of way between the road and the sidewalk, the city would actually do that for free, the actual installation of it. Or if the homeowner wanted the tree somewhere else on their property, the city would at least get the trees to them at cost. And with the trees that I see being removed, I guess the question I have is, do we have a, any type of bylaws as far as replacing trees so that we can stick, you know, that we can keep our Arbor, Arbor Day, Tree City USA that we're part of? Do we have anything like that?
You know, we don't currently have any tree preservation ordinances.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, I guess with, with that said, is it somehow that we can reenact what we used to have, you know, promote trees? You know, get, get the trees out to the citizens, you know, at a wholesale cost.
Yeah, just, just to provide a, a little bit of background, Roger, and I think you and I have emailed about this a little bit for, for the rest of the council people. I did a little bit of research on what happened to the program, and I, and I do think it's a great idea to try to reinstitute some program like that if we can. But I think the, the, the reason why that program died out was, was twofold, and Pam, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, one, we had a vendor who gave us the trees at cost, and I think that, that ended. They no longer gave us that, that, that rate. And, and then the second piece was our, our own DPW was actually planting the trees. And when, when, when we went from having our own DPW to contracting it out, that was one of the services that, that, that didn't get ported over, you know, to, you know, to the contract DPW. So that, that's why it went out. Now, how we get it back would be a great thing if we could figure out a way to do that.
Yes, even if, you know, I guess even if DPW didn't plant the trees, but we would have trees available somehow, you know, citizens could order the trees, you know, twice a year, or at least once a year.
We'd probably have to look into a vendor that, because we lost our vendor is what happened.
They were beautiful trees, too.
Yeah, but we would probably have to look into a vendor that would give them to us at cost again, but that would be something we'd have to research, I guess.
Have we ever reached out to that same vendor to see if, you know, maybe their, their circumstances changed and they're willing to do it again? Do you know, you remember who the vendor was?
I don't remember who the vendor was. I could probably find out, though, but.
I guess one of the things that I'm trying to, you know, get the word out is that when trees get removed and chopped down, and nothing gets planted in its place, it's, it's a void, you know? And with nothing being continually replanted, you're going to have, you know, a, a city that's not going to be the tree city anymore. It's going to be more like a city like Canton or, or Sterling Heights, you know, where there's not the beautiful trees that we do have.
And, and I really, I really appreciate you bringing this up because I actually was from a city that had beautiful trees. And once the trees disappeared, when I go back there now, it's just not.
It's, it's heartbreaking.
It's not the same. It is very.
It's heartbreaking. And that's one of the things that I think people, you know, move into Lathir Forest, you know, the neighborhoods, the people.
Yes.
And year round, whether it's the spring flowers, the summer leaves, the fall colors. I mean, I can remember when I moved in to our house thirty, you know, 30 years ago, it was the fall time, and my wife and I always talk about that. Oh, this is it, you know, and the trees are in the beautiful colors. So it's something that I'd like to at least, you know, try to maybe kindle up again. And the trees do offer a lot of different advantages. I think it improves the, the resale value of homes. The, you know, filters, the noise, or it stops the noise pollution. You know, energy saving during the summertime. If you're in, in the shade, you don't have to run your air conditioner as long.
Okay, um, what, Suzie, I'm sorry to interrupt you off, but Suzie looks like she's been trying to say something.
I, that is actually one of the things that, that I would like to do in conjunction probably with the parks inside, at least in some of the plantings. Now that we have the five-year recreation plan adopted, we will be able to apply for the DTE Energy Tree Grant as well as the DNR Tree Grant. And both of those, those, both of those application periods are coming up at the, I believe it's the end of March, beginning of April. And so those are matching programs. I believe the last time I checked, it was like up to $5,000 for, for tree replacements. So to do exactly what Mr. Lynn was, was talking about to do, and it can be done, you know, with residents to identify trees that maybe need, want to be, they want to be replaced in the right of way or on their property. So this is something that I've been, I've been pining to do as well as a tree ordinance, so.
Good, good. I'm glad, I'm very happy to hear that.
Thank you for jumping in and.
No problem.
No, so, um, we will follow up with that, something that could be on your, your, I think you have a report that you give us also, right? No? Or we can just put it on Cheryl's report also.
Yep, I'll make sure to include it. I do believe it's going to be part of our implementation strategies as well for the master plan or the comprehensive plan, so.
And Cheryl, can, can we, can we try to look and see who the vendor was beforehand?
I think Pam is going to do that.
Yeah, because, you know, we could give them a call and see. I'd be happy to do it if, if, you know, just to see if they'd be willing to do that, something like that in the past. Yeah, I agree with you, Roger. I've lost 13 trees in the last three years in my backyard.
Wow.
I, I would love it if we did something like that.
So Pam is going to try to find out who the vendor is. Suzie is going to be putting together or looking into the tree replacement program. And also, Suzie, if you will work with Pam to, with the vendor, unless you can find another vendor that might, you know.
I have, I have one that I knew I worked with in the past, but I will definitely coordinate with Pam, make sure we are, we're chatting on that one.
Cool. Well, thank you.
Really, I think you'd really find a lot of residents interested if there is such a program like that out there. It's one thing when you have to go to the nursery and get the tree yourself and bring it back. It's another thing if the tree's here and gets dropped off, and then all you have to do is dig a hole and plant it.
Well, thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I'm glad that this was something that Suzie already had on her agenda, so.
Well, thank you very much, you guys. And what I'll do now is, if you ever need, have any questions, Suzie, or you want to bounce some things off me, I'm available to, to assist. Okay?
Thanks, Roger.
All right, thank you much. I'm going to be leaving the, the Zoom meeting here now, so you guys all have a good, good evening and
you too.
Nice, nice coming holidays coming up.
Before he leaves, I'd like to add just a couple of comments real quick.
Oh, sure.
One, we, we had been working with Oakland County to get a few trees, mostly we were using them in the parks. And the last time we were going to was this past spring, and that was when COVID hit, so we weren't unable to move forward with that. So that was another option available to us that we can continue. And I see in the chat that Perry McNeil is also interested. So it sounds like between Mr. Lynn and Perry McNeil, we have the formation of our tree committee.
I was going to say, thank you, Roger, for becoming the chair of.
Well, I'd be, like I said, I'd be very happy to, you know, I have a lot of history with, with trees and I enjoy them, put it that way.
You would both like to send me an email. We'll, we'll get coordinated on this in the early months of the year. It's sstec@lathirvillage.org. Or you can find me on the website, too.
Want to put your email address in the chat, please?
Yeah, I can do that, I think. There we go.
Thank you, Perry, and thank you, Roger, and.
Wait, wait, wait a second. If I go down to the chat here, sorry about this here. What, what was that email again? You said SSTEC?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Okay, very good. Okay, thank you much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night, too.
Um, now, next up, obviously, I've been waiting for this one. Go, because, well, I won't give you my because, so I'll let Cheryl to explain.
Okay, well, if you recall, I guess it was last year and earlier this year, we were talking about exploring having a meeting management software available to us to help with streamlining, streamlining the process to compile the agenda packets. Because it takes a considerable amount of time to do these. And there are options out there that are more efficient and a better use of staff time in particular, as well as making it easier for the public to access and interact with the information. So staff could spend some time reviewing a number of different programs, and the recommendation right now is for the Munich Code software, and we have with us Leon Rogers from Munich Code, who's going to give you a brief presentation, and I think you're able, Roger, I know you're here, and hopefully you're able to share this screen. I have to do something, I think.
Okay.
How about that? Can you see my screen?
Yep.
Excellent, very good. Well, first of all, honorable mayor and council members, thank you very much for this opportunity to come visit with you tonight. Also, I would like to thank you on behalf of Munich Code for being an existing customer of ours. You may or may not know that we do the codification services for the city of Lathir Village. And like I said, on behalf of the company, we want to thank you for being our customer. We also are very appreciative of the opportunity for us to move forward with yet another one of our products. And that is a product that's called Munich Code Meetings. My name is Leon Rogers. I'm the national product specialist for Munich Code Meetings. Just a real brief bio, I've been involved serving local governments for over a decade and a half. And for the majority of that time, it's been in this particular arena, that is Agenda and Meeting Management Solutions. What I'd like to do before we get to the question and answer period, which I'm sure there's lots of questions, and I'm happy to address any question that you have, is just give you a little background of how we even got to having this conversation we're having tonight. For those who, you who don't know, Munich Code is the oldest and largest codifier in the nation. We started in business in 1951. We are privately held, family-owned company. It's going to stay that way, certainly as long as I'm going to be alive, that's for sure. This is not the typical type of technology company which tries to build up a customer base and then put it on the auction block and then sell you off to the highest bidder. That is absolutely not the way that Munich Code works. What we've done, though, is over the course of many years, we've actually expanded the services that we offer to local governments. And the interesting thing about these additional services, which Munich Code Meetings is one of, all of them have come from requests from our existing customer base. We listen to our customers and we react, and we do the things that are within our wheelhouse to be able to do. And these multiple services, each one, by the way, works perfectly fine standalone. You're not required to have any of the other services. However, what we've discovered, though, is it always tends to be the same small group of people at any municipality that reach out and touch a Munich Code service. So what we're working towards is to have a very deep integration between all of these services. What that means is that US customers can very easily move documents and content from one platform to the next. And this, as Cheryl had said earlier, this increases your staff's efficiency as well as it allows you to be more transparent with the public. A quick overview of the, of the software itself. Munich Code Meetings is a really pretty standard software as a service business model. And so what that means for you is that you can use Munich Code Meetings for all of your public meetings, not just a city council meeting or a workshop like we're doing tonight, but any other board, committee, or commission that requires an agenda. There's no additional cost for that. Also, we don't charge on a per user or per seat basis as other software vendors do. You can have as many users in the system as you like. Also, there's no limit to either the number or size of documents that you store in the system. And we've built it in such a fashion that there, it is very straightforward for us to configure and set up for every new customer. So all of that's included in that annual subscription. And we scale this basically to suit any size of an organization. We have some, like I'm calling in from Austin, Texas, we have some customers out in West, West Texas, folks. As God is my witness, there are more fence posts than there are people. But on the opposite end of that, we've got some extremely large customers, like Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana, that comes to mind. Combined city and county government, they serve a population base of almost a million. They have over 10,000 staff. Now, most of our customers are not on the extremes. They're more likely through village, in both in terms of the population you serve, as well as the size of the organization. Important thing to know, makes no difference of the size, it's always affordable regardless of size. And we can, as I said, scale it to make it work for any size organization. Also, with Munich Code Meetings, we are a true end-to-end agenda and meeting management solution. Your users can submit agenda items into the system. We have a very robust approval process and workflow engine built into it, so you can review these agenda items and their attached documents. Obviously, you can create packets. There is a minutes module so that the minutes can be taken during the meeting. We also have a very robust voting engine, and it really manifests itself in two ways. One way is the clerk or whomever the agenda manager is that's taking minutes can drive the voting. Or if you folks, as the elected officials, want to vote from an electronic device, you can do that as well. The other thing, too, is I do know that the city does have a YouTube channel. Built into Munich Code Meetings at no additional cost is a timestamping engine whereby you can actually timestamp your agendas to those videos. Also, what we're suggesting to the city is what we call the Munich Code Portal. And what the Munich Code Portal is, is simply just a very skinny version of our traditional municipal government websites. And we built this specifically with the idea of making meeting information and documents extremely accessible and easy to find for the public. In addition to that portal, we have some other options that we've been discussing with Cheryl and your staff. One of them is a board and committee management module. This is a huge time saver because in your current format of trying to keep track of who's on what board and what committee, and when they started, and what their term is, and you're doing all that in multiple spreadsheets. All of this now can be done in one central location. So that's the overview that I wanted to give for you folks tonight. I'm going to stop talking now, and I'm just going to open it up for questions. Does anyone have any questions about Munich Code Meetings, about what we do, or frankly, anything that we do at Munich Code overall?
So, and maybe I, I see that it is a dashboard, and when I was looking through, and I got to go back to it, when I was writing my questions out, the tension somewhat. One question was about your SLA. And I see it says that it has a, where, where, where is it? About the, man, I had it, I should have removed it. It was about the amount of time and on the guarantee that the service will have uptime, uptime of 99.95%. And that at the self-service level is not met within a given month, you give us a credit. But my question would be, is what's the response time if it does go down? Or, you know, go ahead.
That's an excellent question, Mayor. And first of all, I did not explain the robust backend that's on this system. What we use for that is the Microsoft Azure Government Cloud. The reason that we chose the Azure Gov Cloud, or actually, there are two very specific reasons. First and foremost, Microsoft has multiple massive data centers all over the United States. So what we do, and you don't even have to be involved in this, we replicate your data and content to multiple locations, okay? So you never have to be concerned about a backup, and you certainly never have to worry about your data being lost. And the other reason that we chose the Azure Gov Cloud is that it has more security certifications than any of the other major cloud providers. So here at Munich Code, not do we only host Munich Code Meetings in that cloud, but all of our online services, like your online code of ordinance, when people go up on your website and they go in and check that, that's all being from the Azure Gov Cloud as well. So that's where everything is. In the history of the Azure environment, which now goes back well over a decade, there has never, not one time, even been a brownout, let alone a blackout. Now, that being said, you know, this is technology, you know, I mean, there could be some horrific thing that could happen that would cause their data center to go down. But what we do is because it's, your content is replicated, we have already done sort of worst-case scenario failovers. So what happens is if a data center did go offline for some unforeseeable reason, we have tested this, and we can actually turn on to another data center within just a few seconds, somewhere between five and eight seconds, we can go from one data center to another.
So, um, is it written worse? So basically, or it is guaranteed it's never going to go down, or is there a time, I mean, or? Or was it, I still, I mean, I guess it's still the response time and, and being written out or being somewhere in a contract, I guess. You get what I'm saying is, I, I get that you never had a, a failure, but is, so there is no response time to it. Because I'm just trying to figure out how you say that the service level's not met, then you give us a credit. But, I mean, if, I don't know. Okay.
Well, it just looks like their, their, their historical uptime is, is near 100%, and they've got their disaster recovery. You know, it sounds pretty standard disaster recovery for a large organization, so it just seems like their uptime is going to be up a lot, but if there, if it does go down, you're basically saying you'll give us some type of credit.
Correct. That's correct. Let me deal with response time.
I was, I wasn't asking in particular about that, Bruce. What I was asking was, is there a certain amount of time? What is the response time? I wasn't specifically asking for what the credit would be or what would happen once we, if it went down and that their fail sec. I'm asking what the response time would be if they, if it went down.
Well, in terms of our side, excuse me. As I said, we've never had the Azure Gov Cloud go down. We've been a customer of theirs for all over a decade ourselves. But we feel it was incumbent on us to run worst-case scenarios. So our dev team does this. What they do, I'll explain to you, it's really very simple, Mayor. What we do is we set up a trial account so that it's not public, it's not one of yours, it's not one of our customers. And then we try to break it, right? We say, okay, this is what would happen if that data center went down. And so now what we do is we have software algorithms that are constantly pinging all these different data centers. And if one of those doesn't respond, we will do that failover, okay? That failover response time is usually somewhere between five and eight seconds. It happens lightning fast. Now, there's one other response time, though, that I do think is important for people to understand. And that is, let's say we've got a support issue, or actually, this is more commonly what happens. You hire a new employee and you want to set them up for training, okay? So somebody sends an email to our support team or to the project manager or calls in, whatever it might be. First of all, if you call in, you're going to get a live human being during our operating hours, which is 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM Eastern Time. You'll get, it's not an automated thing with a mess of buttons you push, a real life human being is going to answer the phone. But we guarantee a support response in no more than 20 minutes. So let's say you do have some technical problem, you don't know what it is, you reach out to us. You will have a response from us in no, no more than 20 minutes. And the reason that we make that guarantee is because we put an entire internal timer when we either get a call or a, an email into our support desk. And if no one from our support team has reached back out to you in 15 minutes, guess what? There is an alert, a text alert that hits the president of Munich Code Web and Munich Code Meetings phone, and guess who calls you then? So we have never, ever, in the history that we've been doing, either building websites or meetings, had a response that was less than 20 minutes, 24 hours a day, we guarantee that.
Thank you. That's what I was kind of, that, my kind of, that's what I was asking, what was your response? I think that's what my first question was, was what response time was if something went down, period.
I asked a question relative to that, please. The, so whenever something goes down, it sounds like, first of all, that you, you have enough servers and everything to, to help get it back up quickly. But does it, does it require a phone call? I mean, what if we were preparing for a meeting and we didn't know it was down, and we were going to get on? Do you know? Before we know, do you have that type of, okay?
Yes, ma'am. As a matter of fact, what we do is we, as I said, there are multiple data centers all over everywhere. And what we do is we have internal systems that are clocking them. And what I mean by clocking them, I'm talking about they're talking to them four or five times a second, right? So we, we're going to respond and have that failover before you folks even know that it would break, right? And again, we've never had to cross that bridge, but we have done the tests, and we're, we're very confident of that.
Gotcha.
Other questions, ma'am?
Um, so the contract, it was saying that you don't have a long-term commitment required. But is there, is there a minimum requirement? I know it has the 60 days, you know, that the minimum of 60 days, yeah, a minimum of 60 days to say we want to get out of the contract, but is there a minimum for an actual signed contract?
Excellent. Then another great question. And the answer to that is no. There, there, we recently changed our service agreement here in 2020. And that is, is if you take a look in, actually, in, in the invoicing terms, we don't even invoice you for 90 days. So you've got 90 days, once the time is the contract sign, get people trained, get people using it to see if that's really something that you want. And if it is, then we'll go ahead and put in the call for the invoice, okay? After that period, let's say this is two or three years down the road, and you decide, well, we'd like this now, but we perhaps want to try some other product. All we need is a 60-day notice. And what we'll do is then we'll go ahead, if this is in the middle And what we'll do is then we'll go ahead, if this is in the middle of a, an invoicing cycle. What we will do is we'll simply refund you whatever the balance of that point is. Our goal, and actually they'll say one more thing. We have never lost a customer since people have started. That doesn't mean at some point in the future that we won't. And that's the reason that we spell out what we plan to do. The other thing that's related to that, this is an important thing for everyone to know. Is that Munich code makes no claim in any way, shape or form to your information and your data. That is yours. So if you do, at some point in the future, choose to part ways with us, just let us know, we'll assign a project manager to you. And what we'll do is we'll work with your IT team to figure out, okay, this is how much content you've got up here on the cloud. How do you want it? What form do you want it? How do we get it to you? That sort of thing.
You answered my question. So we still, we still own the data then?
Absolutely. We make no claim to any of our customers' data.
And we have a question from someone. Are there discounts for longer term commitments?
That's a good question. Typically, customers don't ask that because they're, they're, most of our customers are mid sized to small local governments. So they're living like you folks, I think, from budget year to budget year. That being said, is if you are interested in that, what I would need to know is, okay, how many years are you thinking about? And what I would do is I would just make a phone call to Brian Gilde. He is the president of Munich code meetings. And I say, listen, Brian, the people at Lathrow Village want to say. Prepaid for five years, is there a discount that we can provide to them on that annual fee if they prepay it for five years? And that's what I would do is I would just simply ask that question.
I hope that answered Jason's question that was from James. Does anyone else have any questions before I continue to take over this whole part of the meeting?
I have a question for Cheryl. Cheryl, so what features of this product do you think we'd use the most? And what benefit do you see you and your staff getting out of it?
Well, just to give you an idea, it takes the good part of a day to put the agenda packet together, a good five hours. So some of the features that I like are outlined in the memo that's in your packet. But I definitely like the roll call and that it records votes. That'll be beneficial to Evetta's clerk. The advanced search engine, I know Bruce knows that it can be very challenging to find, you know, something on our, on our website in this current formation. Importing the historical agendas and packets for up to ten years. The, in regards to the boards and commissions and the appointments, the application process as well as like a tickler file. To let you know that their terms of office are about to come up. And you can access it from any device that has access to the internet. So if you want to look at your agenda packet that way. It, he had already mentioned the video streaming as well as the timestamping of the video. It integrates with YouTube and. It also has that what they call a public and private packet. So if you have a separate packet for like a closed session, you're able to accommodate that. And I also want to mention that our intention is to share a portion of the count cost with the DDA. Because they'll be utilizing it as well.
Oh, thanks. Leon, have you guys done any, I, I assume you guys have some type of cost, you know, benefit analysis that indicates, you know. Percentage of time or money that a, a average client would, would save over not having the, the tool. I mean, do you have any, any type of benchmark or guideline or thoughts on that?
We don't have anything official that we've actually put, made available to our customers. That being said, like I said, I've been kicking around this space for a decade and a half. I, I will, I will explain where your most immediate savings are going to be. The first one is going to be in time of your staff time. And what most people don't think of is, as Cheryl said, the amount of busy time that people are just spending messing around, getting papers and documents. And oh, did I put it in Dropbox and I put it in the right folder? They lose emails, all the rest of that sort of stuff is very difficult to quantify, Bruce, but it happens in every municipality. And so one of the things that we find is important is you, you only have so many hours in the day that you can work. Why not have the people do something that's more productive for the organization as opposed to all this busy paperwork stuff? So there's not really an ROI type of component that really makes sense. Yeah, we've, we've even discussed that, by the way, trying to put together an ROI calculator where we would just have some arbitrary hourly. Fee for an employee, right? And a cost of a ream of paper and what does it cost for ink and all the rest of the stuff, right? But the more that we tried that, the more we realized, you know. We don't want to appear to be used car salespeople because one size certainly doesn't fit all. Like you folks, as an example, you're coming from what we refer to in the industry as a manual process. That is, you're not using a competitive system to Munich code meetings. So your bang for the buck is going to be much greater than let's say a neighboring community who might be using one of our competitors. That have already streamlined a lot of those manual processes, but they just want a more efficient piece of software. So their bang for the buck frankly, would be much less than it would be for you folks.
Thank you.
And I, I access my packet offline anyway. So, um, I'm just trying, because I know you said Cheryl about printing. So the planning commissions is not through PDF? It's printed and given to them also, or am I missing, or am I?
I think I said printed, but they are emailed to them. So being able to access it any way you want to, because it's always in the cloud will be a lot easier. Cause I don't know about you, but sometimes it's like, I know it's in my email somewhere, but I, I may not be able to lay my hands on it. So having that as a means to be able to access it. And Leon, I had a question for you as well. So if you're looking at the agenda, if you click, click on an agenda item, does it take you to that item?
So why don't I just show you that real quick? It'd just take me a second, okay? Because this, I think, a picture is worth a thousand words.
Thank you.
Part of our proposal is to have what we call the Munich code portal. And this is an example of one, excuse me, this is Brisbane, California. They've been a long time code customer like you and they use Munich code meetings. One of the things all of our customers love about this portal is the fact that it's so simple for the public to use. You can search meetings by date range, you can search meetings by meeting type. So it makes it very easy for, for the public, I'm talking about non-technical people to be able to find meeting related information. The system, when you create an agenda, first of all, let's define what we mean by the term agenda. Agenda in our nomenclature is that one or two or three page cover document for the packet. The packet is the agenda with all of the attachments, okay? Let me just simply click on one here, where's one of their city council ones here, this will work. There are two methods of which you can view either the agenda or packet. You can view it as a PDF and you can download that to your local machine if you want. Or you can view it online, either in a browser or an Acrobat, whatever you prefer. We also create this, which is an HTML version. And people ask me all the time, well, Leon, why do you guys go through all that effort to make both versions available? The primary reason that we went down this path was that an HTML packet or an agenda for someone viewing this online. Is helps you with your ADA compliance. As a matter of fact, we guarantee that all of this content you see right here is ADA compliant. But you want to talk about clicking on a link, there would be embedded links. So like as an example here, if somebody wanted to review these minutes from that closed session, they could simply click on it. This will open in an additional browser and people can review these documents straight from here. You also can do the very same thing with the PDF version. Then this is something that's unique to Munich code meetings is that we have the ability to configure for you, no additional cost. To be able to embed those links right in that PDF as well as the system automatically puts bookmarks in that PDF. So for any of you that are used to navigating a PDF via bookmarks, the system does that automatically for you as well.
I just fell in love.
Other questions?
I have none right now.
No, I'm good. Thank you. Looks great.
Actually, no. Um, so who are your, who are your competitors?
Well, there are quite a few. Well, I guess that's an odd thing to, to answer. Frankly, what's happened in this industry is that the number of competitors that were here five years ago has shrunk. And how, what has happened there is there've been a couple of very deep pocket. Of equity companies that have gone out and bought these companies, okay? And what they have done is they don't care about the technology. What they're doing is buying the customer base, they're looking to buy people like you so they can make this thing appear bigger. And then they're going to sell it off, okay? So in terms of real competitors right now, this, the marketplace is actually shrinking, it's not growing. But there are really only four primary competitors to us that really deal specifically with the local governments. There are other agenda systems out there, some deal, their target markets, like say would be like a school board or maybe upper ed, something like that. There's also systems on the market that are geared entirely for the private sector. And because as you might know, in the private sector, they don't have to be transparent like you, you know, if it's a privately held company. We don't have to put our budget up on our website, you guys do. So the point I'm getting to is that the, the, the number of players in the field are shrinking, it's not really growing. And there's probably about four, maybe five that are the primary active players along with Munich code meetings.
All right, I won't keep asking questions and, um. I have any more that pop up, I'll send them to Cheryl. Does anyone else have any other questions?
So did I hear him say that if we didn't like it in ninety days, we had no pay? I'm just kidding.
No, that is exactly what I said. If you don't like it within ninety days, I did say that, yes, ma'am. And it's in our service agreement.
Okay. Sorry, I do have one more question. I, it is something that's probably, that's why I should close it. When it comes to training, how many hours do you get for training? Is, is that contract contractual or is this until, you know. Four hours, eight hours, something, you get what I mean by that?
I understand exactly what you mean and I'm asked that question from time to time. We don't charge for training, there is no limit to training. There's no limit to anything that's support related at all. And, and Mayor, here's, let me explain typically how this happens. Once you sign the agreement, we begin what's called implementation and we assign a project manager to you. And there'll be a primary point of contact on your side. Typically, it's someone who does the clerk type role, you know, somebody in agenda manager has to build agendas. And there are really three levels of users that we do training for. One is what we call the general user, that's typically very simple training. And we can, we usually do that in multiple training sessions because it's almost impossible to get all of your staff together for one training. And so sometimes we do it in a week, sometimes it takes two weeks, depends on your staff's availability. Then we have clerk and agenda manager training and then there's one higher level called administrator, okay? You can do as much training as you want, you can, we, we prefer frankly, that we do the training. Now, some of our customers though, they require that we do what's called training the trainer. That's their own policy, that's not ours, okay? We prefer to do it frankly, because our project managers, that's all they do all day long. They know the system forward and backwards and it's much more efficient if we do that training for you. And whether we do it, you know, in the first two weeks, we do it six months later, we do it three years later, no additional cost.
Okay.
Was that part of your initial setup, Leah?
Well, there are no initial startup fees, that's just it. We have an annual subscription and that annual subscription covers all configuration setup, training, technical support. All of that is covered under that annual subscription.
I saw something in there that says fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollar initial setup fee, is that not?
So the fifteen hundred dollars, thank you for bringing that up. One of the things that we do offer is a professional service for some of our customers. Who wish for us to take it upon ourselves to upload into this portal, what you're looking at right here, your historical documents. What I mean by a historical document is any agenda packet or minute that is not created inside of Munich code meetings. And that's one of the things that Cheryl and I have been talking about previously. So that is a one time fee, but that's not part of Munich code meetings directly, it's actually part of the portal.
Yeah, I see that now in the, in the documents, yeah.
Leon, could you touch on two things, the meeting notifications relative to the agenda packet being ready? And the, um, the interaction with codes as they're adopted.
Very good, I am happy to do that. So, um, as I mentioned earlier on, when I first described the portal. What it is, it's nothing more than an extremely skinny version of our municipal websites. And it's the same content management system on the backend. One of the tools of that content management system is a very robust email notification tool. And the way our customers use that is they typically allow the public to self subscribe. And you can manage that list completely yourself. You can put users in there, as long as you've got an email address, you can do it yourself, you can import lists from Excel. And if somebody moves or out of the area or then they don't longer want to subscribe, you can remove them, they can remove themselves. There's no limit to the number of these lists. Some people, as an example, they may want to be notified from the system whenever an agenda for a meeting is made public. The system can be done, set up to do that. You create the text that you want in that email and boom, it can be sent. Some people are, don't care about agendas, don't care about packets, all they want to do is read the meeting minutes when those are approved and available, same thing. So all of those are things that you can do to help increase your connectivity with the, the local public, okay? The other thing that Cheryl just mentioned, you folks are an existing codification customer of ours. We've recently introduced a new integration into Munich code meetings. And that is, is that right from the minutes module, it is possible to send to us, to submit to Munich code. And ordinance for codification. And what happens is he, once you submit that to us within sixty seconds, that will be available on your online code of ordinance. Matter of fact, I'll show you an example of one right here. This again is the city of Brisbane, California. If you adopt an ordinance and you send it to us, within sixty seconds, it's going to show up here on your online code of ordinance under this section here. Where it says adopted ordinance is not yet codified. Immediately upon that landing there, an alert is shown up at our codification team in Tallahassee. And each customer has different schedules for supplementation. Some have a supplement once a month, some twice a year, whatever that might be. Whatever you've agreed to with us, our code team will go ahead and codify it. Once it is codified, then we will go into the backend of this for you and it will be removed from this section. And it will be available over here with the rest of your online code of ordinances. Also, while we're on this, I'll show you something else that's cool, since you guys do have a YouTube channel. Notice where it says right there, it says ordinance is sent from Munich code meetings will include extra meeting details. Let's pretend I'm one of your, your constituents, I didn't make it to the meeting. And I happened to be looking at this and I've realized, oh my gosh, there's a new ordinance. Well, I might want to see the context of that meeting where that was discussed, what was all laid out. All they have to do is click this button right here. They'll be redirected to a page that looks something like this, again, I'm using Brisbane. They, like you, use YouTube. Underneath this video is the agenda that is timestamped. Each one of these relates to a jump point that's in the video itself. We also load for the public to see the HTML version of the packet. So if somebody wants to look at the ordinance itself, they can simply click on the link. Not only will it display the ordinance, but if you've sent us any supplementary information that you want to go along with that ordinance. That will also be displayed for the public. We do this integration for all of our code and meetings customers, there's no additional cost for this. Does that make sense, Cheryl? Is that what you wanted me to show?
Yes.
Any other questions from anyone else?
Just trying to see if you have anything in the chat, if not, um, I'm good.
Okay, well, thank you for the opportunity to answer your questions, a pleasure to, to meet you folks.
Thank you, Leon, for answering my questions for us. And next up is the marijuana licensing and application process.
Well, we gave you, I gave you all your update at the joint meeting. We haven't, I haven't, I've gotten some feedback from Suzie since that meeting, but I haven't gotten anything. From anybody else yet, so any, feel free to send me any feedback you have on that.
Okay.
That's about all I got for you on that.
Thank you. Um, next is the infrastructure committee update.
Yep, just, I have a signed copy of the recommendation. So last, at our last meeting, I did two things, I kind of updated you guys on. The, the roads and ditch portion of our infrastructure structure committee work in terms of which streets are going to be done, why we chose those streets. You know, basically the approach for the first construction season and then also talked about water sewer lead, all those kinds of things, capital improvement needs. But as far as the But as far as the road ditch piece went, uh, the infrastructure committee formalized that into a formal recommendation like we've done in the past with the sidewalks and the. The recommendation to put it on the ba- uh, the the millage on the ballot. So this is, this is just the formal recommendation of the uh, the roads that we've chosen and uh, and why. So you got that, everything in there is stuff that we discussed in the um, the last meeting, but it's 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 there for for free to review again.
Does anyone have any questions?
Nope. It's very clear. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. And then this, this just, this uh, probably starting this week, I'll start to put together. The first draft for the infrastructure committee for a recommendation for all of those various water sewer lead related projects that we talked about last week. Along with um, uh, information, well, along with a recommendation for a capital improvement. Capital improvement bond, which we also talked about. So um, committee will be working, moving forward with that and and once we're ready. We'll get, we'll get that recommendation out to council as well.
Okay. Thank you. Um, next, the resolution to raise the demands of public health crisis. Cheryl?
Yes, I, a number of communities, including in Michigan, as well as counties, have been adopting a resolution that identifies and recognizes that. Racism is a public health crisis. And as a result, they've either developed resolutions, sometimes there's action steps such as a task force or commission. To work on combating racism. So what you have in your packet is a draft. Of such a resolution for the city of Letherton Village. But I wanted you to see it before it's on your agenda next, at your formal meeting, in case there was something you want to change.
So I think that maybe needs to be changed is that um, change it from Westland City Council.
Yeah.
Later.
I missed that. Okay. There's a lot of cutting and pasting.
Um, that's all that I see at this time.
Is it on the first page or the second page?
In the therefore not be resolved.
Right at the top.
Okay.
And then the attested date also needs to be updated.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good. Very well needed, very much needed. So. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, concerns, I mean, or comments? Okay, so next up is the twenty twenty one city council meeting dates.
So these are the proposed dates for next year. I'm still keeping with the study session on the first Monday. And the study session and council meeting on the third Monday. I'm noting those dates that would fall on a holiday. So I didn't know if anyone had any issues or major conflicts relative to these days. Before we put it on your agenda for your adoption.
Not at this time.
Okay. Oh, I don't either.
No.
Actually, especially if there's still Zoom calls, I think that, you know, we should.
So if it's on a holiday, Cheryl, like Labor Day, are we, are we keeping it that day, the worst thing?
Oh yeah, that's a thought. Well, the Labor Day.
Tested everything for the holidays.
So Labor Day is September sixth, so we're proposing that following Monday, September thirteenth would be your meeting day.
Okay, okay, I got it. Yeah.
And as you mentioned, the um, the remote meetings, the legislation has been introduced relative to extending it, I think to March. They're expecting that to get through both houses by next week. So hopefully before they close out. Their session for the year that will be adopted.
So they would have to do it by the end of the week because they, isn't it their end of the legislative term, the thirteenth? So they would have it by the end of this week? Helpful?
I don't know. The caller was on with MML earlier today. They were speculating next week, but hopefully, whenever it is, they'll take action on it.
I hope so. Okay. Um, I guess the council meeting dates have. This, the one that's on page twenty one is a part of the first, right? This is not something different.
No, this is um.
I got it.
This is identifying the holidays.
Maybe I should have printed my packet so I can do the agenda and look at this instead of scrolling, but anyhow. Appointments, Lether Village Community Foundation Historic District Commission.
So on the Lether Village Community Foundation, they're in the process of updating their bylaws. What's in place currently is that there's a, either the city administrator or their designate serves as a board member. And there were two council members. What they're changing it to is still keeping the city administrator a designate, but only one council member to be appointed by council. So and those terms of office would coincide with that elected official's term of office. And to let you know that at your December twenty one meeting, you would have to determine who that's going to be presently, I believe it's. Mayor Garrett and council member Stallings. And also the historic commission, they have one vacancy that's coming up. And Robin Roberts has indicated she does not wish to continue to serve on that committee. So. That is already posted. I don't know that we've received any applications as of yet.
Excuse me, um. Robin does, she does want to stay on the historic district. Yeah.
Oh, she does.
She does.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think the DDA also has a, a term of office that's about to come up.
I guess Pam Sturmyer is coming up.
Yeah, but then we have an opening also, right?
Yes, we also have an opening. So Pam has already expressed that she would like to continue. She was. She was finishing out a term. I think she was finishing out either Jett's term or Sam's. I think it's Jett's. Um, so she's up in in the beginning of February and then we have one more vacancy that needs to be filled by. A business owner or a property owner. So.
Um, did we, um, so is the vacancy from um, Corey?
No, uh, no, not Corey. Corey, um, that's a different process.
Okay. He was an alternate, right?
He is an alternate. Um, and and we're gonna have to follow a different process for him. Technically, his term does not. Expire for a little bit, but he has not attended one meeting. So we just need to remove him. But um, no, this. This is, who's was this? Maybe this was actually Jett's vacancy. We've had, I mean, it's been a while that we had. We've had this vacancy. We didn't have any interest for a while and then, you know, the world stopped. So we never got around to it, but. We do have three businesses that have already submitted those applications. So, so.
Did, um, it'll be in, the three people will be included um, in the next package. I didn't see it in this one. I mean, I got it separately, but I didn't see it in this packet. So. Alrighty. And for the uh, historical, this is not written right, because she does want to stay on it, right? Right. So we're good with that. There's no opening or vacancy on the historical district.
Well, what we've been doing is posting the position regardless of the interest of being reappointed. But from what I'm hearing, she is interested in being reappointed.
Okay. Still, she's, she's still applying because I mean, I think that's what we were starting to do or whatever. Okay. Um, scroll back up here. City administrator updates.
Well, it's been an interesting week. So first, I I just want to mention to you that we did have an employee who tested positive. So we've been putting the mechanisms in place relative to having the pathogenic spray in the building and the other protocols. And I'm very happy to say that we were able to collaborate with the city of Southfield. And Chief Menefee and Captain Midichi, who's head of the EMS service, will actually be on site here at city hall to. Allow for all employees to get tested tomorrow.
Employee, council? Employees, staff and council, did you say?
Well, if you're a first responder.
Well. I'll think about it. I'll figure it out.
Okay.
Go ahead.
But in regards to that, Oakland County is offering the free testing. And Southfield is one of those sites that you can go for the free testing. And that's open to everyone who's an Oakland, Oakland County resident. And we, I took a try at having a public comment form. It seemed to be a mechanism that would make it a little bit more streamlined, hopefully, especially if we were getting a lot of people who wanted to participate in public comment to one. They would have the option to just fill out the survey monkey tool and provide their comments. And two, they could just pre-register, so we would have their names um, as as they want to participate in the remote meeting. So that's been available. Jason Hammond had mentioned that he liked it. I thought he might actually send something, but no one actually sent one in. But that's something I wanted to test out this month to see how that goes.
Thank you.
All right. And I want to remind you that city hall is still remaining closed from twelve thirty to one thirty daily. So that we can have the rotation for staff, um, because so many are working remotely. The staff appreciation day is set for Friday, December eighteenth, so we'll be closing the office at noon. The House in the Woods RFP and the Auditor RFP are in process. The Code Enforcement Officer, that's the full-time position. The application deadline is December eleventh, and we've received two applications so far. In DPS, Tim Prest is retiring, so we'll have a small celebration for him on December fifteenth, which is also his birthday. The police department negotiations are ongoing. Their contracts for both the um, the police and the command expire the end of this year. And Chief McKee is working on the Oakland, with Oakland County on creating a transparency platform. And is is really robust, and I think you're going to appreciate having the details available to them. And um, there was a sample as they're trying it out. And basically, especially when you're looking at the crashes, we should really not allow anyone under thirty to drive. But it provides a lot of robust information that'll be helpful and just insightful. The planning commission, um, they started early on the capital improvement plan, and we're already submitting our our wishlist. And they're taking it up, I think, at their next meeting. So your study session, Suzie?
I, yeah, we're, we're having a study session on the fifteenth. Kind of get our, wrap our heads around what everyone's requests are. Um, I don't expect the planning commission to make a formal recommendation to council. Until um, earlier, like the early part of the year, but we're gonna start talking about it now to make sure. I mean, we've done it late, late in the year for the last two years. And so this is. Our timelines, our timeline has improved. So um, yeah, study session on fifteen.
Thank you. And if you recall from the joint meeting, um, you had with the planning commission and the DDA, the the um. Parking, as I, what's it called?
Uh, it's the R one district parking is a special land use.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's a public hearing for that, at that meeting as well.
And that's posted online too. For anyone that wants to check it out, it's already on the city's website as well. So.
And relative to the your town. It's here. I don't know if you can see it. It's not showing up. Okay. But it's arrived, so they should be arriving in mailboxes as soon as the post office could get it to people. And the tree lighting and Santa will be online. They'll be virtual. There are selfie stations already set up and people are starting to use them around the park. And you may have noticed the Christmas decorations are up and we've just seen a lot of comments that people, you know, liking the joyful decorations that we have. And what else? I had a couple other things. We have a display in the hallway from the ARC organization, which is the Alliance for Rooted Communities. It's part of our information obligations relative to how to keep our waterways clear. So that's here. The um, I've been working with Bruce and Giffles relative to having the lead and copper assessment for residents available. So that, I haven't even seen my email, so that if it's not live yet, it will be soon.
Yeah, we're, 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 we're pretty close on that. Um, I think she was gonna put it live today for us to continue testing and then, you know, nobody will know about it until we. Announce, but Scott wanted to check on a few things just to make sure all our ducks are in a row before we actually announce it.
Okay. And I think that's all I have today.
Thank you. Anyone from council have any comments? Bruce?
Nope, I got nothing.
I have a quick question.
All my time has been infrastructure. That's all I've done.
I have a quick, quick question. Um, for, I guess this is for whoever. Well, someone asked me about using the park. Actually, you know, that the um, do we have with with this COVID going on? Can the park be used at all? That area of someone?
Yes, the park is not closed. If they want to use it for an event, they would still need to arrange for it to be rented. Okay. With the limitations on capacity, there hasn't been a lot of interest.
Yeah, and probably with the weather being so cold. So, okay. What is the, what is the capacity?
It's so many people per thousand feet and whatever they came up in their latest version of the emergency rules. It changes periodically.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Um, I believe it's this weekend, isn't it? Um, Cheryl, about the coat giveaway?
I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, um. It's with uh, Kristen, um, Pastor Scotty put it together. It's supposed to be a drive-through coat giveaway. I believe it's this weekend.
Okay. Do you think, do they need more coats?
I know they were taking donations for money for coats. I think you can bring new, new coats there. Um. But I.
Okay. Glad you brought it up because I didn't know, but I'll, I'll give them a call.
Okay, um. And I think that that is it, except my birthday is in three days, but I think that's pretty much all that I had to say for.
Who's birthday?
Mine. Mine, me.
Wonderful. Wonderful, wonderful.
I don't expect anything. I don't expect anything.
A happy birthday. We definitely want you happy.
I am extremely happy. Um, I don't think I have anything else. It was really something else I had to say, but I totally forgot what it was. And I think Bruce threw me off because he didn't say anything. And so now I'm confused.
With the pressure on you.
It did. I think I'm good, though.
We have two other minor things. We're accepting food and pantry items on for this SLS shelter. And um, to support the. And, um, to support the Lathrow Village Community Foundation, there are coupons available on the Facebook page as well as in the York Town that if you go to Shields Pizza, a portion of the proceeds will go to support the community foundation.
And that's all the way till the thirty-first, right? To December thirty-first. Okay, and that's, okay.
And everybody knows that the, um, the three-week pause was extended to the twentieth, right? Okay, so that's until the twentieth now, so, uh, don't, uh, kill the messenger. That's it. Then I will, um, say, have a great night. Um, this is only the sixth Zoom call I had today, so I'm very much excited about it being done. So, uh, you.
I understand, trust me.
And, and we'll talk soon. Like, good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, bye.